Eight o'clock meeting, Farmington Hills City Hall, we're in council chambers. I think we have everybody here except Cheryl, we're missing Steve and Danielle.
Danielle sent an email during the last meeting apologizing for not being here, she was still at work.
Okay, very good, and I think that's it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can I now get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
John moved, second by Tanji, all in favor say.
I'd say it was Barry.
It was Barry, Barry you're throwing your voice.
I was throwing my voice.
Very good.
I'm trying to say I got a mask on.
Okay, moved by John, supported by Barry, all in favor approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, say nay, ayes have it, agenda approved. This is our regular meeting, we have a couple zoning text amendments tonight. Eric, is this something we turn over to staff, to you, sir?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and give you an introduction, then we can jump right into the discussion, yeah.
Okay, and we're setting tonight these two tax amendments for studying for public hearing, right? So we're just gonna get an overview set for public hearing, and I think that's all the business we have except for some minutes, right?
That is correct.
Okay, very good, proceed.
All right, starting off with zoning text amendment two twenty twenty-three, which seeks to clarify the city's zoning regulations regarding the use of shipping containers and similar off-site built enclosures as accessory buildings on both a temporary and permanent basis within commercial, industrial, and residential zoning districts. So this ordinance is really intended to kind of address all your different circumstances of use of these around the city. Introduced to the planning commission back on March sixteenth of this year, and it was ultimately tabled. The draft amendment is a direct response to concerns raised by city council. A high volume of inquiries coming into the planning office regarding the placement of shipping containers in a variety of areas around the city. Observations by city staff and others, the shipping containers and similar enclosures for storage, often on a permanent basis, has become an increasingly common phenomenon throughout the city, particularly within residential neighborhoods as of late. You should have some photographs there in your packet actually that show some interesting examples that have been observed lately around the city there. One is in a residential backyard, the other is in the yard of a business.
Interesting is the most polite possible way of saying it.
Yeah, moving on here, when the draft amendment was introduced, you know, there was quite a bit of detailed discussion about it at that time, and the concerns raised by commissioners really kind of, you know, going back and watching the video, kind of boiled down to two different themes. The first was kind of the burden of asking residents to come in and ask for an approval, you know, for something like this. For example, if you were moving or having some renovations done in your house. And, you know, when you're reading the ordinance itself, you would think that we were asking for that approval. What I've actually done is amended the draft to remove with the approval of the zoning supervisor that language from that part. Essentially because what we actually intended with this ordinance is for it to be a background for enforcement, not to have everybody come in here and get some kind of permit to do this. This is something where in cases that are egregious and we have complaints, you know, and somebody's had one out there for too long without good cause for doing so, and of course we would work with people on a case-by-case basis with that in terms of enforcement. You know, it's something where we can just start that clock, it gives us a basis to do so, to say that, you know, it's been here too long and you need to show us cause as to why it's still here. So in terms of the approval process, there's not gonna be anything formal in that sense. It might even play out like, for example, a complaint comes in, an ordinance officer goes out to the scene, they take a photo stamp, you know, picture of it that has, you know, the date on it, and, you know, we start the clock at that point. Thirty days later, it's still there, you follow up with the owner, and you ask him to give cause as to why it's still there. So basically, it's just kind of giving us that backdrop for enforcement, you know, something clear and kind of concise that we can hang our head on, you know, in the cases where it really becomes problematic. You know, we're certainly not trying to, you know, have everybody come in here and ask us to do this or anything like that, so. Essentially, it's kind of one of those issues of, it's not really a problem until it sort of becomes one, let's put it that way. So then the other issue is, basically, there was some concern about the effect of the amendment on, you know, both residences and businesses kind of using temporary enclosures, well, there's some kind of ongoing construction work, for example, which is quite common. I believe Commissioner Grant had mentioned something about, you know, renovations on a home, and maybe them taking a little longer than expected, that kind of issue, and then also, you know, in the commercial sense, I believe Commissioner Stimson had mentioned something about, you know, often these shopping centers, when they're undergoing renovations, will have a few of these out in the parking lot, that sort of thing. So there's actually an existing provision within the ordinance that allows for that type of situation, where if there's construction actually going on, then you're allowed to have these structures in connection with that construction for the duration that you have a valid permit for that construction. It's when, you know, the permit has been completed and the construction is over and that structure's still there, that that becomes an issue. But we do have a provision that won't be modified at all by the adoption of this amendment, you know, that allows for that particular circumstance. And there's even circumstances where we've interpreted it a little more broadly than that, which we think kind of upholds the intent of the ordinance, where even if you're doing some work that didn't necessarily require a permit, as long as we can see, you know, and verify that you're doing this work and the structure is in, you know, connection directly with that work for a reasonable period of time, then we'll allow you to do that as well. So, you know, with those two things said, I think that addresses really most of the concerns that were raised at that time. And, you know, we could jump into, you know, discussion and see if, you know, anybody has any other comments or issues to talk about.
Questions for Eric, Tanji?
Yeah, I know one thing we did talk about too was the timeframe, they said thirty days, and a couple of us did speak and thought that thirty days wasn't enough, maybe like sixty days.
Okay.
And just to be transparent, I had a pod in my driveway, and it was there for a little while. I'm sure someone probably complained, and I mean, the city was really nice, the lady whoever goes out and do different things, they, you know, I got something in the mail, and she asked me, you know, you had thirty days to remove it, and thirty days I removed it. But at the same time, a lot of people, you may have these items, but you don't know that there's an ordinance, you don't know that there's anything that you can or you can't have it or anything like that, so I think all of that needs to be taken into consideration with citizens. There's no harm, just assume it's okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the way it was addressed, I mean, it was very nice, I mean, you know, they contacted me and I said, oh, okay.
Right, yeah, and this is certainly one of those rules that we're not expecting that everybody in the city would be, you know, aware of, obviously. You know, there would be a little bit of, you know, time that it would take to get this out into the public consciousness a little bit. I mean, that could take, that could take years essentially, but, yeah, the enforcement posture would not be to come after people aggressively, it would just be simply to, you know, tell us why it's still out here.
Yeah.
And that's kind of, you know, this is just giving us the foundation, you know, to do that, essentially.
Do you think, I mean, is sixty days too much time for anything to give someone?
Well, I think sixty days, you know, it's not entirely unreasonable. I mean, if that's what, if the commission feels like that's a better, you know, we want to be a little bit more lenient with the amount of time we're providing upfront. You know, I'd certainly thought that, you know, if we came back with, you know, sixty days, that we still could, you know, achieve what we're trying to do here, you know, kind of preventing them from becoming really a semi-permanent or permanent fixture of the neighborhood, I think. You know, sixty days could, we could still work with that, certainly.
No questions, Eric? Eric, with regard to like a building permit and a dumpster, so if you have a valid building permit, you don't need a permit for a dumpster, do you?
No, you would need no separate approval.
Part and parcel with that building permit.
Yes, exactly, exactly. You have that provision that already exists in the ordinance, where you have a valid permit for construction, you're allowed to have that structure in connection with it.
Good clarification.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're studying this for public hearing, this is something that eventually we'll make a recommendation to city council, and city council may call on it. The duration, did council have input on the duration, or are the sixty-something you saw in other communities? Or what's kind of the basis for that part of it?
Yeah, I think, I don't think council was concerned as much about the duration of the temporary ones, they just were more of the mind that we need to prevent this from happening on a permanent basis. I think that was really the impetus for this ordinance in the first place. But then we realized that, you know, essentially, we have kind of an unregulated environment with respect to the temporary ones as well, so we kind of tried to roll it all in here. But, you know, this is an issue where there's not a lot of ordinances that clearly take this issue head-on. There are some being developed in neighboring communities, I was talking with some planners at Sterling Heights recently, as well as Shelby Township. This is kind of an emerging issue, especially seeing these shipping containers in residential districts. And, you know, I didn't have a lot of existing ordinances to point to, you know, that had a clock, per se, on this. So we're kind of getting out in front of this a little bit, I feel like, and, you know, we might be setting a little bit of a precedent in that respect in terms of the timeframe that other communities might look to. Because the way that this works usually is they interpret, you know, the structure to be maybe of an industrial or commercial nature, they say it's not permitted, but there's not a lot of specifics in the ordinance, it's more, you know, implied aspects of the ordinance, things like that, than seeing something with like an outright clock on it, like, we're gonna have here. I mean, there weren't a lot of examples to really point to to say, hey, you know, this community's doing this many days, this one's doing this many days. I think just kind of looking at it, you know, on a month basis was like, hey, you know, you could probably accomplish a move within a month, a pretty significant renovation under normal circumstances. I think that's just kind of where it started.
Okay, yeah.
And didn't you say too, if they, if you went out to them and they justified it, that they would get extended, extension as well?
Oh, definitely, yeah.
You're not saying hard and fast at thirty, it's gotta go, it's, show me that you're using it and what the plan is.
Yep, we would certainly use discretion on a case-by-case basis to say, hey, if you have good cause, you know, then you can continue to use it, yeah.
To me, it seems like then start at thirty and justify it.
Kind of go up a level from there, right, okay.
Okay, do I have a motion set for public hearing?
Sure.
I move that zoning text amendment two twenty twenty-three, which proposes to amend the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-four, zoning article two point oh, definitions, to add a definition of shipping container, and revise the definition of building into amend article five point oh, site standards, section thirty-four dash five dot one, accessory buildings and structures to include a new subsection thirty-four, five dot one dot one, addressing the use of off-site built enclosures as accessory buildings or uses be set for public hearing for the planning commission's next available meeting agenda, June fifteenth.
Eric?
You could just leave it open-ended and say next available meeting agenda.
Okay, next available public hearing, the planning commission, okay, very good, we have a support, Barry, support. Any questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, set for public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, ayes have it, set for public hearing. Our next item, zoning text amendment three twenty twenty-three, chapter of code thirty-four, zoning ordinance, amend zoning ordinance to revise definition of motel, this is also set for a public hearing, in sections thirty-four dash two point two, Eric?
Okay, give you a little introduction on this one, I might, my point to Tom here to help me out with some of the, if we get into the specific kind of legal aspects of it, but basically, draft ETA three twenty twenty-three is intended to strengthen the city's zoning regulations regarding short-term rental of residential homes, which is currently not a permitted use in the city. To this end, the proposed amendment revises the existing definition of motel, actually in such a way as to more clearly include short-term rental of residential homes. The approach is based on Michigan case law, which focused on the definition of motel, and the limitation of motels to non-residential zoning districts as a means of prohibiting them in residential zoning districts. So kind of in other words, you know, case law has looked at, you know, cities that have said, hey, you know, you're renting a house on a short-term basis, that basically fits the definition motel, which is a commercial use in our zoning ordinance, therefore, it's not permitted in this, you know, residential setting that you're carrying on the use. So under our ordinance, motels are actually restricted to only B-three general business and ES expressway service districts. Therefore, if a home were used in a manner that fit the definition of motel, that use would only be permitted if that home were in the B-three or ES district. So it's kind of bolstering our ability to more clearly, basically, you know, put these short-term rentals in the light of being a commercial use of property. And that's kind of what this change in definition does, and, you know, since it's been a successful, you know, strategy in a court of law, you know, this kind of came down from the attorney's office, city manager's office, that, you know, this would be a good way, you know, to kind of give us a better foundation in those enforcement cases, so.
So, short-term rental, Airbnb, whatever, just so everybody's clear. So the legislature constantly has in front of it bills to take away your right to regulate this at all.
Yep.
But the one case we know that has upheld the right of a community to regulate it, did it through the definition of motel, and basically said, you know, there's no provision in the ordinance that says short-term rental, or specifically refers to Airbnb, but we find that it fits the definition of motel, and it's not permitted in whatever the district was, so. I don't know whether this is a placeholder, or what, but I mean, in a way, it's kind of like, we're waiting to see what happens.
Yeah.
The legislature, in the meantime, this gives us the right to say, no short-term rentals here.
Yeah, I think it's considered a bit of an interim kind of measure here, certainly, yeah.
Oh, no, no short-term, sorry, no short-term rentals, period, in Farmington Hills.
It's historically been the case that they're not a permitted use under the zoning ordinance.
I mean, this is good for me to know as a realtor, because there are people who purchase properties.
With the intent of.
With the intent, just like, I just did one in Bloomfield Hills the other day, and that's what they want to do, an Airbnb, so.
Most communities historically have not permitted that, and if somebody called your planning department, they would be told no. But this is sort of puts in place the actual words to.
I guess certain, yeah, certain areas of the states, for example, Atlanta, I mean, they're known for Airbnbs, I mean, it's very popular, it's okay, so, just.
But they, they come with real enforcement issues, and, you know, if you're not a community set up for that, it can be an issue, that's what this is for.
It's just good to know.
Mm-hmm.
You got a question, Barry?
You know, being in a similar line of work, I've found out throughout the years that a lot of the neighbors get rather tense when they see different people walking in and out of a house, or.
Yeah.
I had, I have an apartment complex, I represent Ann Arbor, and there were different people walking in and out of the house, and the person rented the house specifically for, to make it an Airbnb, a condo, I mean. And, which, because they're near the big, the big house, so they could, she made more money renting the thing out as an Airbnb than she was paying in rent.
Oh, yeah.
And then she got to a point in the month where she wasn't paying her rent, then we threw her out. But, but the lease actually has a provision about not doing short-term rental, or allowing for that, so we got her on that too. But that's the reason why, is the people that live nearby see different people walking in and out of a house, and they just wonder if the house is being robbed or what's going on.
Noise.
This would be, yeah, that's another thing, sometimes they rent it out for a party and it makes lots of noise, but this type of an ordinance would put an end to that, and give a little bit more security for people living in the neighborhood or nearby. So I have no problem with it, I just don't know if, as Tom says, if, whether or not the legislature will let us keep up this sort of a thing. There are, I mean, you go to Traverse City, this is what they do.
Yeah, I mean, I was previously a planner in Grand Harvers County some years ago, and, you know, we dealt on the front line of this issue in every respect. And, you know, short-term rentals in many cases have the ability to destabilize an entire neighborhood, I mean, they can be quite a nuisance. You know, and then there are some that you would never know they're a short-term rental, there's a wide, you know, spectrum of properties out there in that respect, so, yeah.
So my question is, a couple of questions, are we seeing that we currently have a lot of issues out there that for which we're, we'd like to do enforcement on?
Yeah, there are some pretty egregious cases that are kind of in the enforcement realm right now.
And so we're not really enforcing it, or aware?
No, no, we are, we are, but we'd like to have a firmer foundation to do so.
So that goes to my second question, it seems like, why can't we just directly say, no leasing renting within residential district? Why are we using definition motel?
Because we have a published court of appeals opinion that says that works, that's literally it.
So this is somewhat cutting edge, you're saying we're waiting for the legislature to maybe take a stand on it that may affect us?
Yeah, it will, I mean, eventually, they will get the votes, and there will be some level of preemption. And we'll have to read that state law and design around that, in the meantime, we know this works, that's why we're not trying to invent a wheel.
Okay, so that's why you're using the definition motel?
Yep.
Okay, and one last question, and then we'll go to Kristin. We also have definition hotel motel in our ordinance?
Yep.
And just for the public's interest, what's the difference, are you prepared to give us the distinction between hotel and motel is?
Interrelated direction.
I think I know, but I'm not absolutely sure, I think one has to do with.
Typically, it's direct access to the outdoor.
Yeah, it's the access, access to the building, right.
Versus interior.
Motel, outdoor.
Collective access for a hotel, yeah.
Okay, so specifically, you're talking about outside access, and we're using that language based on a court precedent that we're dealing with, Kristin?
Why not just define what short-term means?
Again, we're taking a case, we know where it worked, and using that model, you know, we, if we created a definition, are we gonna have to defend whether it's clear enough, who knows what basis somebody might come up with to challenge it? We know this works, that's all, and we're not, we don't expect this to be the rule long term, so. This does seem like the quickest, easiest, most clearly enforceable.
Okay, good.
I have a question.
Question, Tanji?
Or comment?
Yeah.
So if hotel is defined as being able to gain access inside, motel outside, so you also have condos that are, you gain access inside that are ownerships, or apartment buildings, inside of a building?
I think the language actually says either exterior or interior for the motel.
It says either, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think this language covers that, but that's a fair point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, staff, any staff, Eric, our city planner, Tom, or Tom Schultz, our city attorney? Okay, the motion to set for public hearing, Barry?
I move that zoning text amendment three twenty twenty-three, which proposes to amend the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-four, zoning article two point zero, section two point two, definitions, to revise the definition of motel as provided on the draft amendment be set for public hearing.
Support, okay, supported by John, discussion on the motion, Joe?
Yeah, I'll support moving this forward to a public meeting, you know, I don't know that a house is a motel, I don't know how I'm gonna vote on this later, you know, I've used Airbnb, and the neighbors have never gotten upset, so, I don't know. I just wanted to air that, I'm not really excited about this.
And, you know, it's a, it's a good point, because, you know, we just came out of a master planning meeting, and we're talking about how to be more current with our zoning and our planning and our vision for our community, and the way of the world seems like people are doing things, and.
I guess to that point, eventually, you're gonna get that opportunity, I mean, but first, the legislature has to tell you how much opportunity this is the placeholder.
Placeholder for now, free speech for us for now, and Tanji?
Yeah, I agree, it seems like we're talking with this master plan, and we're taking steps forward, and then we come in here, and then there's steps, to me, we're going backwards, you know, we can't do this, Farmington Hills, to be strict, can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do that, it just seems like a really restricted city.
Well, and that's why, you know, we want to set for a public hearing, and have a public hearing, and have a discussion with the public, and view our views about it, so we have a discussion, so we'll come through a process that will give a thoughtful recommendation to our city council, what we think is, makes sense. And the commentary with that, in the minutes, that goes along, that says, you know, we're aware that council wants our community to be, we want to be current, we want to be, but we also have to consider what it means to our residential district, and the viability of residential district, so it's, it's a, it'll be an interesting discussion, Tom?
I guess just to, you know, the reason why the legislature's had this on its plate with competing interests from the municipal league on one side, and, yeah, the hotel lobby's on the same side as the municipal thing, interestingly, but the realtor sort of being on the pro side, I mean, it's a complicated subject, like, if you represent, or if you rent your house out for a certain period of time, you're gonna lose your single-family exemption with the state.
Barry?
So they're designing regulations that reflect the reality, people are buying houses to rent, hopefully, they're paying their taxes and doing the right things, but there's a lot, there's a lot behind this.
Yeah, they're fine.
Front communities that are, like Eric says, kind of being destroyed, and it's a complicated subject.
Very good.
Yeah, some people live year-round on lakes, believe it or not, you know, that's their, that's their year-round home, so.
Well, the residents should be comforted that their planning commission has thoughtful concerns about ordinances we pass and recommend, and we'll have a thorough discussion on it, so they can hear it, and it is complicated, and there's a lot of interests at stake. So we look forward to that public hearing. Okay, did we call for the vote on that? No, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, and nay, ayes have it, that's set for public hearing, the next available public hearing, the planning commission. Next item is approval of. Next item is approval of the April twentieth, twenty twenty-three joint meeting with city council and the April twentieth, twenty twenty-three public hearing slash regular meeting of the planning commission. Any comments for Cheryl on the minutes? They looked impeccable to me. Barry?
I move that we adopt the minutes taken for the April twentieth, twenty twenty-three special joint meeting. We can do the other one, too?
Yep.
And the April twentieth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
One motion, yeah.
Okay, one motion, uh, support?
Support.
Kristin, has Kristin got it? Uh, moved by Barry, supported by Kristin, all approving the two sets of minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and nay, ayes have it, minutes are approved. Public comment, seeing no public comment, we'll move on to commissioner staff comments. Uh, we'll start with Joe.
Thank you. Dale asked me to share with you all that.
That was interesting.
That, uh, I'm headed to Norway, uh, tomorrow.
How nice.
I, I have been treasurer, uh, for twenty years of a quasi-governmental organi- uh, technical organization that is civil engineering of navigation support infrastructure. And, uh, nations join, the United States is one of the many nations, and I will be representing the United States in Oslo at the annual general assembly of this organization. I'm not getting a Nobel Prize. Name of the organization is an acronym for its old name, which was the Permanent International, uh, Association of Navigation Conferences.
PIANC.
Yes, PIANC. That, that, that is what it's called, but it's now called something or other. It's got an even longer name now that includes waterborne infrastructure. But it has, they didn't change their acronym, what?
Joe, does it involve large bodies of water or the infrastructure on large bodies of water or?
It, uh, yes, it, it involves.
Oceans?
It, it involves things that are international. So rivers, but the rivers have to cross boundaries, if you will, for there to be interest in this, from this organization. Recreation, uh, navigation, certainly, but, you know, not.
Yeah.
Even though the Great Lakes is international, there's not much interest. But Canada has a section, the United States has a section, Iran, we have meetings in Iran, China.
Try not to get kidnapped the next time you go to Iran.
So I don't, I don't.
Dad or Russian.
I don't go to all these meetings, because I'm just a treasurer, you know?
Well, uh, we feel, uh, like we're well-represented, Joe, and, uh, safe travels tomorrow to you.
Thank you, Dale. The tie-in I will, I will put into this is that therefore, for twenty years, I've had an opportunity to travel internationally. And, uh, so that gives me an opportunity to bring a different perspective, uh, to the planning commission.
How long?
Huh?
How long?
I have a two-hour meeting and a one-day meeting, so I'm going for ten days.
Very good.
Tom, Tom has a comment for you. We're wondering, are you staying in a hotel or an Airbnb?
I, I am traveling on US Army travel orders.
Wow, really?
And, and no, I will be staying at the, uh, the, at the hotel across the street from the Opera House.
Nice.
In, in Oslo. And unfortunately, the two meetings are like four days apart, unfortunately, so. I'm going to have, yeah.
Plan that.
Yeah, I'll have a lot of downtime.
Very good.
Yes. So who did appointed you, appoint you, seriously? How did you get appointed to that, by who?
Assistant Secretary of the Army, uh, appointed me in two thousand and four.
Okay.
Did he realize what he was getting into with your appointment?
Because the, the Assistant Secretary of the, of the Army for Civil Works is, in our charter, always the chair of our organization. And obviously, that changes with each president, yes.
Is this yearly?
There is a annual meeting, but we, uh, uh, held a conference in, uh, an international conference with twenty-nine countries represented, uh, at the end of April, right after our last meeting down in Florida. Yeah.
Cool.
Good, well, uh, safe travels, productive meetings. Barry, tough act to follow, but your comment, please.
Uh, the, uh, mine's a little closer to home. The, uh, there's been a telephone pole laying on the side of.
The last six years?
No, it's, it's only been there since like, uh, November of last year, but it hasn't moved. And it's right, it's right near the entrance to Trillium subdivision. And sometimes when we open our mouths and say, why is that hole sitting there for seven, seven or eight months? And is it, if they're going to use it, put it in the ground, not lay it on the ground? And I was just waiting for someone to skid off the road and run into it, but it didn't happen, because we didn't have a lot of snow this year. But, uh, and the other thing was they closed Drake Road for a month, so we couldn't go, we couldn't worry about hitting it then either. But now that Drake Road's open.
Do we know who's responsible for that? Is it DTE or? It is DTE.
It's DTE.
Yeah. Detroit has.
It's their poles and everybody else rents.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of, there's like maybe two poles nearby it, and I don't know where they're going to, but where they have it, there's no wires anywhere near it. So I don't think they're going to be putting it there, it's just laying on the side of the road. And the last time I opened my mouth about a, a pole sitting by the side of the road, which was on Drake Road, it got taken away.
Well, uh, Eric, I know in the past, the city manager's office has had contact with the community relations, uh, contact with Detroit Edison. If somehow that could get, get conveyed, maybe.
Let them, let them dig a hole in the ground and put their wire in.
Plague is my one for like.
Thank you, Barry.
Past two years, but.
Taj?
Yeah, it happens.
Well, I did some international traveling. I just got back from South Africa about three weeks ago. Uh, that was a very nice trip. Uh, also went to the safari, and I was probably from maybe where you are to where I am to a lion. So that was nice, and heard it roar. And it was the type of roar where it was calling for the females to come in. So it was, it was different, yeah. They, you know, the female are the ones that do the work. They're the ones that hunt and do everything, the lion just lay there and wait.
Yes, just sits there.
No, 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 it was the safari, no, I saw everything, um, giraffes. Yeah, beautiful photos of, um, of a pregnant zebra. Uh, it was really nice, it was a good trip, really enjoyed it.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Also gives additional perspective.
Yeah, it does.
Yes. John?
Hi, nothing.
I'm set, Marissa?
I'll just, I mean, it's, it's, because we're all sharing. Um, last week, I went to Austin, Texas, to the data center build conference. Certainly, Farmington Hills probably doesn't have the land or property to, uh, consider a data center, but it was very interesting learning about everything that's needed and whether or not we'll pursue data centers in the future. But the thing about Austin is, is I was there ten years ago and we were talking about master planning and, and the span of ten years and what can change in that time in Austin. Granted, I, I go to major cities where there's been an immense amount of change, but I was, I was just astounded by the amount of change in Austin, uh, specifically Rainy Street, which was the street of the cutest little homes that were all very quaint bars and restaurants that you could walk into. And it's been completely commercialized and gentrified in, in the span of ten years. So it, it gave me some good perspective as we're talking through the master plan, the impact that we can have on our plans over, over a short period of time. Ten years does not seem like a long time, so, but great conference, very interesting. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Kristin?
Go, Kevin.
Oh, yeah, that's Tom.
Tom? Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, so I have a motion to adjourn. Moved by John.
Second.
Taj?
I know.
I was, I was.
Smoke with John.
We thrilled, we didn't get anybody.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Ayes have it, to adjourn.
Love it, it's pretty.